Called the Town Council Meeting to order for Tuesday, December 19th, 2017 at 7:05 PM. Start first with salute to the flag.
Let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Here.
Counselor Candelora.
Here.
Counselor Diamond.
Here.
Counselor Fawnin. Counselor Miller. Counselor Rose.
Here.
Counselor Viglione.
Here.
Counselor Zampiano.
Here.
Motion to approve the November 28th, 2017 special meeting Town Council.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion correction. Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is the December 5th, 2017 special meeting, 6:00 PM Town Council and Board of Education. Any corrections, discussion?
So moved.
Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
And Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is the December 5th, 2017 Water Pollution Control Authority and Regular Town Council Meeting.
So moved.
Second with corrections on page three. And it's like halfway down, it's the paragraph that starts with Counselor Miller objected to it at this time. There's the second last statement, it says there were violations in 2003, but I, George isn't here and I don't recall that statement being said in what the violations were, so I would like to table until George Miller is here so that we can verify that with him.
Okay, so we'll just table that.
I just also had one other correction, page 12, the consultant referred to the EDC grant writers Randy Franks spelled, R-A-N-D-I.
R-A-N-D-I. So I withdraw my second.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, so we'll just table it. Next we'll move into the regular Town Council Meeting, reports of committees, boards, and commissions. Economic Development Commission.
They'll be meeting later next month and they also have planned a breakfast meeting on the 23rd and I should have more information for you at the next meeting.
Park and Rick?
There was, it was recorded on at the last meeting and there is no meeting for December.
Police Commission?
The Police Commission met on December 11th, in addition to the chief's monthly report, discussion centered on tire replacements, the telephone upgrade system, and concerns about speeding and need for stop signs at Edward and Arthur Roads.
Fire Commission, I don't have a report on that. Board of Education, Town Council, Communications Subcommittee?
There was no meeting on that, I don't know if the Board of Ed has appointed members to that committee yet.
Next is Town Planning Gold Subcommittee?
No, no meeting.
Public Safety Communications. Planning and Zoning Commission?
George isn't here, so.
East Shore Health District?
They don't meet until Thursday.
Moving to the Town Manager's Report, update on oil tank at Stanley T. Williams.
Yeah, both these items are informational, so the first item on the tank, I have a copy of a letter I sent to the state, we're working with them on that, hoping to confirm with Fran tomorrow that the switch over has been completed, I know they were working really diligently to do that, obviously last week we didn't meet because of the weather, so I'm hoping that that will happen tomorrow and I can communicate that to the state and we can wrap that project up at Stanley T. Williams, so if you have any questions, I'm sure Frank can answer that, but we're moving along. And then the other item is Item B, First Impressions Program, is just information, a report that we did in a program from EDC, so it's the raw data they had mentioned at the last meeting, and when the final report comes up, I'll give that as well, but I thought you might like, find it interesting to see that data. Sorry for the length, I know it was pretty long.
Our next item is Community Events and Presentations. Seeing none, we'll move on to Citizen Statements, Petitions, and Correspondence.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor, Town Manager, Phil Seward, Fire Chief, Town of North Branford. I would just like to make a public statement that on 13th of December, the Fire Department along with North Branford PD and Public Works were all involved with the response to a fire on Mill Road on the property of Olgers Farm, and I have to say that without exception, the response by members of the community, by business in the community, it was outstanding. Members responded at 5:45 AM, we worked there close till 11 o'clock, and I can't tell you the number of citizens that stopped by, businesses that stopped by that delivered breakfast sandwiches or coffee and donuts on a very, very cold morning for the members that were working there, and it simply demonstrates the unifiedness of volunteerism and dedication that we have in our community to the emergency services, and to that, as Fire Chief, I want to thank them publicly, thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Kaplan, 1936 Milltown Avenue, I also want to concur what the chief said, I work at the high school and by the time I got there at about 7:15 in the morning, you know, they did an amazing job and they did it with what they had to deal with there, it was pretty phenomenal, but that's not why I'm here. I'm here to express, to express my disappointment, I guess, in not seeing David Palumbo's reappointment to the Police Commission, and when I think of people that I've served with on various boards and commissions throughout my years here in North Branford and people that I've witnessed, people that have integrity, honesty, understand their roles and responsibilities and are all about community, Dave is the epitome of that, and I don't know the other gentleman that he's being replaced by, but I'd have, I'd have to be hard pressed to find someone finer than Dave and representing the Town and Police Commission. And as far as my potential reappointment to the Economic Development Commission, I very much would like to continue to serve on that, and if you could find somebody that's willing to work as hard and be as creative and give the time that I've given, please, you know, feel free to replace me, but at some point, it would be nice that you make a decision on that as well, thank you.
Okay, moving on, resignations and appointments.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, and I would like to amend the agenda to add the following reappointments to the agenda, so it would be N, the reappointment of Larry Casey to the Board of Assessment Appeals, O, Victor Palmer to the Park and Rec Commission, P, John P. Anofrio to the Park and Rec Commission, Q, William Geldenzi to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and R, John Duty to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
I'll second that.
Any others? Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Okay, moving on, resignation of John Landoffi from the Police Commission.
So moved. Or we don't have to?
Right, we don't have to, we don't have to make a motion on the resignations.
All right, next item is appointment of John Pollack to the Police Commission to replace David Palumbo, term to expire 12/31/18.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Epstein.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin, I'm sorry. Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
And Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Okay, next is appointment of Victor P. Andrea to the Police Commission to replace John Landoffi for a term to expire 12/31/2018.
So moved.
I'm confused, you changed, you changed those?
Yes.
They were, they were mixed up in, in sending them.
May I make a statement at this point? I, I just don't know how you can justify putting Victor P. Andrea on the Police Commission. The Police Commission deals with many issues that are confidential, that are classified, and I, I am concerned about any disclosure from things that happen at the Police Commission are going to be detrimental to this town. I worry about what's happened in the last six months, the number of times Victor P. Andrea's asked FOI information from both the Board of Ed and from the town, taking a lot of time from Board of Ed employees and town employees when they should be doing work for the town or for the board. I just find it very difficult to trust his judgment and to trust his temperament to be on the Police Commission, thank you.
Roll call?
Was there a second?
You guys seconded that, right? Anthony, did you second that?
I'll second it.
I thought it came from down there.
I moved it.
Okay.
And I don't know if someone seconded it before Murray discussed.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought it was down there.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
No.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is appointment of Laura Buick to the Fire Commission to replace Anthony Del Camer, term to expire 12/120.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
No.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is appointment of Maria, Marine O'Shea to the Housing Authority, term to expire 6/30/20.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
And next is reappointment of Rose Angeloni to the Pension Committee as Town Council Member, term to expire 12/119.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Epstein.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is reappointment of Joseph Fawnin to the Pension Committee as Town Council Member, term to expire 12/119.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is reappointment of Anthony Candelora to the Pension Committee as an alternate Town Council Member, term to expire 12/119.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Epstein.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is reappointment of Frank Bergantino to the CIWWA, term to expire 12/31/20.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
And Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is reappointment Alice Lear to the Ethics Commission, term to expire 12/31/20.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is reappointment of Zach Kanda to the Ethics Commission, term to expire 12/31/20.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Counselor, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is reappointment of Ron Siena to the Planning and Zoning Commission, term to expire 5/31/20.
So moved.
Discussion? Second, who's the second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
And Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is reappointment of Harry Dulak to the Planning and Zoning Commission, term to expire 5/31/20.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is reappointment of Larry Casey to the Board of Assessment Appeals, term to expire 12/31/20.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is reappointment of Victor Palmer to the Park and Rec Commission, term to expire 12/31/19.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is reappointment of John P. Anofrio to the Park and Rec Commission, term to expire 12/31/20.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is a reappointment of William Geldenzi to the Planning and Zoning Commission, term to expire 5/31/19.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is reappointment of John Duty to the Zoning Board of Appeals, term to expire 12/31/18.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Epstein.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
That's all I have, moving to unfinished business, discussion in action, review of contract with Silver and Petroselli Associates, North Branford Police Department renovation project.
Yeah, I thought this would be a good opportunity, invited representatives from Silver and Petroselli to be in attendance tonight to really get back on track in terms of make sure we're all on the same page with respect to the scope and services that they're provided through the RFQ/RP process, also had sent the contract to Attorney Marino for review, wasn't ready for the packet, but I know he said, had time to take a look and comment on that, but I think that's just a formality, I believe, in terms of the contract, the council's already gone ahead and approved and given the green light, we just got put on hold for a while trying to sort through the whole budget process, and I have copied the, should have the RFP there for you, just to refresh with respect to the general scope, background, and items that we had discussed many months ago as this process unfolded, so I think it's, the council, as I may have mentioned in the past, is at a point where this would be an opportunity to be very clear about where we're, where we're going forward with a potential renovation expansion project, and that this is the first step, first phase of it, and that you get the scope around that and understand that this is going to be driven by the council, and in that way, I thought maybe if you had any questions for the architects, we could hammer that out before they put pencil to paper, and we also have the chief and lieutenant and members of the Police Commission here as well, so that we're clear about the must haves, if you will, for lack of a better term, going forward, so that we, I believe, my understanding is that the council was looking at a scope that is somewhere in the one and a half to two million dollar renovation project scope, so that we understand what we can get for that, that we're not building the Taj Mahal and going for, you know, a four, five, six, seven multimillion dollar project like that, so this is an opportunity to sort of bring it back and take a look at it and answer any questions you may have. And maybe we can start with Attorney Marino and get that housekeeping out of the way with respect to the contract that I would assume is in order.
Yes, thank you, I did review the contract, I also, Mr. Silver and I spoke about it, I do think though that from the contract perspective, a lot of the questions that I raised might be driven by the scope of the project, you know, for example, I had questioned, the contract doesn't speak or provide a specific substantial completion date, it's going to be hard to determine what is a acceptable substantial completion date until we, you know, the framework of the project, so, you know, before we get into the weeds of the contract, I think generally speaking, we need to define what the actual scope of this project's going to be, so that then, to the extent that we can narrow certain questions that I have, I could then address those directly with the vendor. But that, so the comments that I had generally, I think, are going to work themselves out through the process of determining what you're actually seeking to accomplish through this project, and once I, once that has been established, I think I'll be able to tighten up any holes that I see in the contract.
Mike, so I thought when we, when we met last at the PD, with them, they convinced us that they had to go through and figure out what we needed to do, and that hasn't been done yet, right? So we're, somehow, we need to do that before we can do the whole thing?
Well, yeah, I think we've, we ought to be, yeah, to your point, clear about the engagement and the direction, but I believe there was still an unresolved issue with respect to the size and scope, if this is a million and a half, if you're going to put a cap on this and say, hey, listen, you know, don't, don't put together drawings and conceptual documents to, to the effect that we're going to go at something that looks like, you know, over two million or three million, and I think that was the first threshold we needed to discuss, was about the number, so that you could, you could back into that and figure out what the must haves, which you need to have, based on what was driven in the RFQ/RP process, so you're right, we need to, we need, they need to get in, they've seen a lot of the DTC stuff, they were in, did the tour, I think they got a lot of information, I won't speak for, for the architects that are here tonight, they can obviously respond to that, but I think we're ready to go, if the council feels that this is a viable project that you're going to fund, the funding in place for the architectural first phase, and this is the way we wrote it, first phase for conceptual design, scope, feasibility, and then if we like what we hear and see and we like the services provided, we can then also engage this company in the document-ready, construction document-ready process, only if you're willing and, and see this, this project through, it looks, in my opinion, that we're going to have to, obviously we're going to have to bond this in terms of funding it for the actual hard construction cost, the soft costs, they would call them soft costs, they call them the front-end costs of, of architectural services, we already have allocated.
Well, so the original bid was somewhere around $20,000, correct, for, but that was, I thought that was like a feasibility study and whatever else, and then with the council said, well, we already did all that, that we weren't going to do the feasibility study again, so is that contract, that $20,000, going towards drawings, or what exactly is that?
Going to conceptual drawings.
So we're not doing the feasibility study, right?
Well, I think the, a lot of it was captured in the, in the DTC and the study that they did, and the various meetings that the Police Commission had to identify what the needs of feasibility, I think there's a certain component of that for the architects, I'm, I'm just not clear, because we haven't had a chance to, to get through the, the whole process, where they are, what their knowledge base is of what, we had that meeting, I think they had, I think their knowledge of the building is, I think they have a firm grasp of what's going on there, and I think the conversations we had from the last meeting that we were all there in that joint meeting, I think they have a very good idea of what, what we need to do, it's just, I think we need to give them clear instruction as to the scope, what we can get for $2 million.
Well, aren't they going to tell us what we can get for $2 million? I mean, I think, nobody would argue that the I mean, I think nobody would argue that the whole basement is a disaster.
Absolutely.
So...
But then, but then there was also talk about doing a possible add-on to the one side, going out, like getting that done and then being able to move some of the operation into that new building while they do something else. But we don't know if that is feasible, if that can be done, if there's issues with that. So where would that fall? Does that fall under the feasibility study, the twenty thousand, or are we doing something else?
Yeah, I hope it would fall in here, but we can certainly, I think...
I mean, if they can come up to the microphone.
Take advantage of there and have a, have a conversation with them.
I'm Bill Silver with Silver-Petroselli Architects and Engineers, based in Hamden. With me tonight is...
John Ireland, also with Bill.
Principal and project manager. Yes, the conceptual study does produce designs for you, but more importantly, we do the programming and we assemble, we absorb the feasibility, the condition study that had already been prepared by DTC. But we do programming. We discuss what the current needs are, the future needs are of the police department, and we factor all that into not only reconfiguring the lower level, the upper level, whatever may be needed, as well as what additions and site work may be needed. All keeping the budget in mind as we're developing it. And very likely, these conceptual plans may show you a fairly large shopping list of what the needs are that might exceed your budget, but at least it's a shopping list that you can go through and choose what are the priorities for you to bring it back into your budget. It could be we're lucky enough, we'll deliver the first concept under budget. But it is truly a study and conceptual plans that are in the RFP that we are delivering for you as part of it. And it is comprehensive. It restudies everything that you've done up to date, so that it is a comprehensive document of not only the historic, historic development of information, but also contemporary information that we absorb there on-site, as well as what we bring from our other emergency services work.
If you, if you come up with a lot more areas than we identified, would you then prioritize for us, so that we knew what were the most important ones or the ones that are most critical?
We would recommend prioritization, but you people are the ultimate ones to set the priorities.
So realistically, for you to design what we need, we need to do the first, we need to do the first part. And I thought that's where we had gotten to at that last joint meeting. And I know I started out thinking, well, let's just build a building, and that then, we didn't end the night that way.
And in our charges beyond the building, it's also to consider site aspects as well. So we will bring the entire shopping list of the site and building needs to you. Really what a study does, it should bring you the entire picture, plus conceptual plans. So at least you can get a visualization of the space elements, but more importantly, also the budget that goes with all of those elements.
So what, what would be an approximate timeframe for this first phase?
Within the contract, I believe we'd said we'd complete the feasibility study in about six months. I think for contractual purposes, we said nine months for the study, for the overall contract that we reviewed with Mr. Marino. We put twenty-four months as the entire contract duration, but that, everything is editable within or amendable within the agreement. The agreement truly has attached to it just the RFP, which is the study and conceptual scope. But it also has clauses in there that allows you, if you wish, to expand our services to include construction documents, bid phase services, and construction administration. It does not tie hands to it, it allows you to choose. That is correct.
Okay, so, so what's our next step then? I mean, if we already approved the RFP?
Yeah, it was, it's just...
Right. There, there was conversation on this side as to trying to determine a scope based upon what the, the thought was, what the budget was, one and a half million or two million dollars.
But it sounds like the better practice would be to have the vendor go through their analysis and then present to you a total renovation project that you then can decide and prioritize based on your budget, what you want to do. You know, we, we thought on this side we might be able to control the scope and therefore the timeline if you more narrowed down what you wanted to accomplish, because it's doubtful that you're going to be able to accomplish everything on your list that needs to get accomplished within the stated budget.
So I think it's just signing the contract and, and going and getting, getting this off. I mean, obviously, we're going to have to coordinate with, with the police department in terms of access and getting them any information, whatever they need. Unless there's a desire of the council to set a timeframe for completion of the feasibility documents. A tighter timeline than outlined already, so six months, nine months?
Well, I, I mean, I, I don't know if it's possible to have any, is, is it going to have an impact on our budget for eighteen nineteen, which we will start working on in March and finalizing in April? Like, is it possible, I mean, do we have to have numbers by that time, or we can just, whenever they come in, if it's after the budget time, we work on it then?
I think, I, that's a great question, and I think the issue might be to try to wrap it all in, if, to ask if we, if we were to engage them in the first phase and say that takes nine months, right? In terms of this, we, we're going to exceed the, you know, fiscal year, our whole budget process. The question isn't in that second phase, document phase, how long would that take? And maybe we're, we're into, you know, another...
Nineteen, twenty?
Yeah.
Budget year.
And if it's a, if it's a bonded item, it's not really going to have a direct effect on the budget.
Well, it, well, it depends on debt service in terms of the issuance and timing of the issuance and the...
But we'll just see a minimum jump in debt service.
Right. I, I've asked, you know, and I did ask Anthony to, to run some numbers just so the council would have, and I, I think he has that.
The market right now is about a three thirty, three fifty bond rate for twenty-year bonds. So I ran it at four, being a little conservative. And four million, a two million dollar twenty-year bond would be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in debt service over the, over the twenty-year span. Interesting thing, as they talk about the tax reform on a federal level, if that does go through, it will impact our bonding rate, because the lower the individual tax rates become, the less attractive tax-free financing becomes. So our rate may creep up a little bit if that does come to be. So just keep that in mind as well.
Anthony, you used, so...
I used four. It's about three point three, three point five currently.
So four would cover, because, so, so where are we with our bond rating?
Our debt service?
No, the...
Bond rating is double A two.
Yeah, like when we were with this whole state budget, they downgraded us, or they didn't downgrade us, or they granted down...
Negative outlook, yes.
They what?
Negative outlook.
Negative outlook on the town of North Branford.
Right. Plus a few other towns. And in talking with the folks at Moody, they're not going to relieve that until this whole budget thing gets settled, because as you know, it's still a moving target. There's still talk of, you know, further reductions to our, you know, our aid, and it's, it's a nightmare. But to answer your question is that negative outlook has not been removed from our bond.
Okay, so the question, then, the next question is, the four percent covers our bond rating with the negative outlook on this?
I would think so, yeah. Yeah. I'm confident that's a reasonable number. Again, caveat being that if that federal tax legislation does change...
And interest rates keep going up.
It's going to keep going up on its own, plus the impact is going to negatively impact us.
And I will address the schedule concern that you have in the budget timing. When we, it was an arbitrary number when we had said, how long do you need for the feasibility study? Nine months is very conservative, and it actually gets right to the very final, final report, not draft report. Probably within three to four months, so by March or April, we should at least have that draft report to you, which will be the first glimpse of the total package, of the total budget. It'll give you a sense of what you may need to budget, and that after that point, it could be the study will be completed in five months. It was just nine months, but it's an arbitrary setting. We do not intend to take nine months. Certainly, it requires the timely decisions on the part of the commission as well as the council as part of our give and take of information. But we should be able to have some preliminary budget information to you in March or April.
Okay.
I've got a question for you. So, so if we took nine months for this phase, that twenty-four month thing, to have drawings, does that start at nine months? Or is that saying if we just move forward and give you all your answers and had the money, in twenty-four months, we'd have bid documents?
No, even less than that. We can produce bid documents for twenty, for two million dollars or a million and a half in less than three or four months. That twenty-four months may very well, in our mind, cover right on through the end of construction. We put, just in our, the AIA contracts put a duration on a contract, just so there's a sense of when do you think you're going to be done with those contract terms. There's nothing that says it can't be extended to thirty-six months to cover you through construction. We put two years, just because we never know how slow or long or fast the process will go.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just had one question for you. With all of this, whose responsibility would it be for, I'm sure with police stations, there are many codes, state statutes, that must be followed? You know, is that your experience?
That is ours.
Right.
Primarily building and fire codes are architect strengths, but we also incorporate any state statutes that we're aware of. And certainly, we look at the expertise of the police department. They know their statutes even better than we do. Sure, we bring the experience from our other facilities with us. We will ask them devilish questions as much as they ask us.
So you're involving, I'm sure, the police chief, police commissioner?
Oh, that's, that's a good study if you do.
Moving on, future budget planning initiative?
Yeah, I just put together some information based on a meeting that Anthony and I had with the state reviewing the Health Partnership Plan two oh. And hoping to get more information as it comes available. But this was just a list of where they're at at this point in time, gathering new municipalities, boards of eds, and other, I guess, units of government. And, and I know Anthony's making calls to the municipalities, trying to ascertain their experience in terms of those new towns signing up, in terms of their transition, and, you know, how much, you know, mapping and lineup they have, and how many, you know, gaps that they have with respect. And I'm not sure that's ready yet, but we're still continuing to look and evaluate this plan. In addition, I think Anthony took a meeting today with the consortium and is looking at that information as well. So we're just still in information gathering mode, but I wanted to just give you a glimpse of where the state plan is at this point, in terms of their members and their participation levels.
Thank you. Next is a review of EDC grant writer position.
Yeah, I, on this one, I believe at the last meeting, I had said I'd check references and had done, had a chance to, to do that. And so my memo suggests and recommends that we would engage the services of Randy Frank for grant writing purposes. And obviously, we won't pay her unless she does something. And when reviewing, as you said, you know, she said in the proposal, first hour is free in terms of review, and she'll tell us upfront if we, we think we're eligible or not. So I think it would be good to at least have her on board, be ready for any grants that may pop up, and see if they fit for a North Branford.
I mean, I think she has excellent qualifications. My other question is, she looks at potential grants, but she's going to come back to the council before she would then start working on one, right? She, in other words, she would come back and say, I see these two, there are possibilities, before she would start working on one of them?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can, I could set it up that way. I was going to run that in terms of, of being the point person to interface with her in terms of, and feeding her grants that I see that come through that are given to me before taking action. I can set it up in such a way that I can review with the council to say, this is what I'd like to give to Randy Frank in terms of pursuing, if you prefer that. I was going to handle it administratively, just to, whatever, look. And, and or anything that was generated from the council that, that you may hear in terms of sources for grant opportunities, so.
Now, that, that would be good, administratively handling it, but at least, you know, giving us a little sheet as to, you know, what's in progress or what's potentially in progress.
Right, included in my report.
Yeah.
And I guess my other concern is, I mean, because she is out of state, and I know a lot can be done by teleconferencing and phone calls and everything else. But if, you know, she needs to come up here or whatever, I think the council should just be advised of it, because we have to pay for transportation and everything for her, rather than, I mean, that's in addition to her hourly rate. So just to make sure that what she's coming for is something that we truly need her to come for.
Sure. Okay.
You have a suggested motion? Somebody want to make that?
The North Branford Town Council hereby approves the proposal submitted by Randy Frank Consulting LLC for grant writing services at a rate of ninety-five dollars per hour, and authorizes the town manager to execute any and all necessary documents for the award of services.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
So we can terminate it at any point?
Yeah, and actually, I mean, it's, it's really not even, we'll engage her for service, we're not paying anything until we're actually giving her something to look at. And even then, it's a, the first hour, first hour review is free. That's when she actually gets engaged in terms of the, of the writing. So we could terminate, yeah, obviously, at any time, or she wouldn't even be working if we, if we didn't give her anything.
So if she were to work on a project, then she'd get paid by the hour, and let's say that project ends, now her next, she's looking for her next project, she gets another hour, she gives, provides another hour free? Or is it just the very first hour free?
Yeah, no, I, I think it's, the way I interpreted it was on a, each, each grant opportunity, that she's going to review that to see if it, if it's a fit for North Branford.
So I can be clear on what we're voting on here, or what she's going to do for the town? So she's not going to look for grants for the town?
Yeah.
We're going to send her a grant? So who's going to find the grant?
I'm, I'm looking for grants. The COG sends on a monthly basis, the council of governments sends grants that they're aware of. And at that council of governments, it's the representative from Rosa Delora and our...
So is this going to be something new for you?
For, for me to look at? Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I had a conversation with Randy as well. Success that she's had in, in other towns with other grants may apply for us as well. So I'm hoping to have a conversation with her to say, you know, what worked in other communities that could work in North Branford. And as long as they're still funding those grants, we'll take, we'll take a shot at those opportunities. So those will be generated from her knowledge base and from her expertise. But I'm looking at the state, state agencies and the COG to generate those leads for me to give to her. As it would be for, you know, I would engage the department heads and the other departments that, you know, whether it's police, fire, public safety, public works, or any of those departments that hear of anything, that they forward. Those opportunities to me to take a look at, to review, and to send over to Randy. I mean, I'm not promising we're going to, we're going to have any, anything, but I think we're, we're, at least we're going to be positioned to have a grant writer on, on call, so to speak, and be able to evaluate and look at these opportunities as they come about.
I think I read somewhere in her, I don't know, resume that, that she wrote grants while, while being employed as an assistant town manager. I believe I read that.
Right. Yeah.
Did you ever write them?
I've written a few, but...
I'm just curious.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I, I've written a few, but they're, they're pretty, pretty, the ones I've done are pretty easy, straightforward, you know, with Steve Grant, so to speak. And, but there are, there are so many different sources... speak, and, but there are, there are so many different sources, and I think she's got a wealth of experience in a lot of different municipalities. So that's, I'm hoping her experience and interface with these other communities will percolate and say, okay, yeah, I think North Branford, based on its side. And, and, you know, in fact, she worked here for some time, she was in purchasing or in term, worked for Frank Connolly, and so she knows, knows North Branford. So I think that's a plus.
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglio.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Can move on to the North Branford Intermediate School Roof Project Bid Award for HBAC.
Yeah, so we finally got through the analysis with the bids. As I, as I mentioned the last meeting, part of the issue was labor versus material, and we were able to get some assistance from Horizon Engineering that went through and tried to quantify what it would be on the labor side and material, and they put together a deficiency list and log that we went through and came out to about 200, little over 218 hours, I believe, for, for the labor aspect of it. And in talking with the low bidder, they were willing to come down on the, on the other side of the markup from 40 down to 25 percent. So in that discussion, I think we've also done the, the background, I mean, the reference checks, if you will, and calling other municipalities and other entities in terms of their performance. So we're, we're comfortable in that, in getting the right company on here, and that is perfect temp. And I want to also thank Counselor Rose for his technical help and assistance on that. But I think we've got the right company in perfect temp to pull this off. That was really the, the issue, that's what held it up from voting on it last, last time, but I think we're ready to go.
So how, how soon would they start on this? Right away?
Yeah, so as you, yeah.
Once it's awarded?
Yeah, once you, once you approve it tonight, we'll get on the phone, let her out to them, get them started. We'll have to coordinate, you know, get, Bill Chody's been in the loop, he's been at the table, so in terms of coordinating his schedule with theirs to get them, get them started.
And is there an estimated timeframe to complete this?
Not at thi, not at this point. I, I don't know. It's going to be, to some extent, weather.
Driven.
Weather-driven, right? But just so, just so you know, the other, the other point I'll, I'll mention is, I have to go off memory, I had some notes. The original allocation was approximately 294,000 for the, for the project. We've drawn down about 52,000, so we're in a realm of a balance of about 244,000. And with this estimate of hours, based on the, the rate, it looks about 23,000 or so on labor, parts are going to be the, the wild card in terms of, you know, when they get up there, if it's, is it a belt or is it a motor? Unknown. So, but if you double that, or, or if that's the same 25, another 25, 30,000 on, on parts and ABS, you know, we're, I think we can hopefully get this thing wrapped up and, and still have enough, certainly have enough funds to do it. We'll get it wrapped up and get a better idea once they're on board, but I'm thinking 23 for the labor, 25 for parts. Again, that's the wild factor.
And did we recommission the system? Is that part of what we've already spent, or does the system get recommissioned after this work?
Part of what we did with Horizon was to get a recalibration, recommissioning. So we're, we're pretty much at the end of what we've contracted for with Horizon. ABS we need to bring in in terms of the control folks, so that'll be another component. That'll, that'll be the, the last, I think the la, well, they'll be working with this group in terms of doing that. But to your point, it's probably a good idea that when it's all done, we do another, another recommission potential. I talked to Horizon and see what their feelings are on that, but he's got remote access now that we did in this, so he can see it and, and he can do that. Adjustments, I think with going forward, we were talking about Eagle Rivet as the company that's doing the, had done the, the repairs to the, to the roof membrane and keeping, having the Board of Education keep them on, on a contract that they're up there at least twice a year to do that. I think we'll have, if our success is good with perfect temp, that we're going to have them looking at fixing any issues, and then Horizon as well to look at any of the system management that they need to do, and I think that ought to be built into the, to the Board of Ed's side once we, once we finish.
Al, was this the contract that we, before we approved it, that Horizon approves?
Right, Horizon, I think it was in the, it was written in there that Horizon had to approve the work.
Okay.
But what did Horizon come back, what'd they say about the energy wheels?
Energy wheels, no, they, they have integral part in the, in the system.
So that's what I heard as well.
Yeah, but they're not, is, is, he, he didn't see them as a, as a, as you phrase it, an air.
They didn't feel, he didn't feel that that would stop, make the negative air pressure?
No, no, he didn't, he didn't think it was a, in fact, he was, I think his response was that, that it's something he would look at for us, because he, he came back as part of that rebalancing, recalibration, was trying to get the building actually to a slightly positive. And, and so he was a little surprised that we were still, according to Bill Chody, that the, the building still has a negative pressure issue, which means it's.
But am I wrong, or didn't Bill say that six, there's six energy wheels and none of them are working?
Right.
And they change the air for each system? So, so we're lacking air coming back into the building when it's being exhausted? I mean, I don't know, that's.
Yeah, I, I don't think we have a true, fully, obviously, fully functional system with.
Right, I mean, you really can't, without these things running, I don't know how we could recommission it, you know, and.
Well, that's what I was wondering.
Right, so we need to, they need to fix all this stuff, and they're, and we did write it up that they had to come back in hot weather to do the, you know, there's certain temperatures to do the air conditioning side, so we didn't want them to do them in January.
Right, okay.
You know, so they are going to have to come back and do that. So it's probably going to be summer before this is completely done. But I think, I think other than that, everything's, everything's good on it.
Yeah, I think it's on, we're on track, and we'll get them going, so the, pending your approval tonight.
Now, we have a suggested motion.
I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby approves the bid results for the HVAC repairs at North Branford Intermediate School and awards the work to Perfect Temp Inc. of Plainville, Connecticut at $85 an hour with the material markup of 25 percent.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglio.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Just before we move off that, where, where do we end up with the boilers for the high school? I thought that was going to be ready too.
Yeah, boilers are ready, yeah, we, the, that was the.
Wait, we have.
That was all done, so we're just review, we were just reviewing with those guys?
Sit down, review with them, yeah, and then, yep, that's all set, that's, I'll check in with Bill, but that should be, that should be moving forward.
Okay. The next item is adoption of 2017, 18 through 2022, 23 Capital Improvement Program.
This is just a follow-up from the last meeting. If you recall, you 8:24'd it over the planning and zoning. Carrie was gracious enough to get it on the agenda, and the planning and zoning favorably reviewed it, came back to your body for ultimate adoption. Page seven being the, I'm sorry, page six being the current year, the 17, 18 year is the only year that truly has any consequence. And as we mentioned last time, the proj, the projects are basically ones that you've already approved prior. The Northford Park Post-Tension Basketball Court, Memorial Field, that's the new one suggesting fence around the basketball court. Stelling T. Williams Multi-Use Courts, already been done, and the other road, roadwork program that town engineer and Public Works oversee. The big item on the general government is the updated plan of conservation and development that Carrie's working on. First state statute requires it to be updated. And the other projects basically are equipment reserves for the fire department, funding the current lease on the rescue trucks, and on Public Works' existing lease, and three new vehicles to replace ones that have rotted out underneath this crew.
So Anthony, in this year, it is, I'm trying to find it, the, we have the, a fence around the basketball courts?
That was a suggestion that we had to use some of that money for that grant. We had, made a significant investment.
Why then we're going to need to? Because we've had like three inches of snow, and the other day I went by and there was a snowmobile track across it, and, you know, they just pared it off.
It's a shame to let them, you know, ruin it on us, so.
So a fence would stop that, and that's the only thing that'll stop it.
Correct, correct. And Fran's gotten a couple of prices already. This 11,000 and change price was the higher one, so a couple have come in lower than that, so we're going to get that rock, and before they do.
Would that just be like a four-foot fence on that, or?
Six-foot.
Six-foot fence?
So just to, because we have the new council members here, even though it's a five-year CIP plan, it doesn't mean we're bound.
Oh, certainly not.
In all the other years, even there's suggestions there, but that doesn't bind us to those things.
Right, that changes on an annual basis, correct. The, anything but, anything out past the current year basically is, is a wish list, and people have some projects they'd like to have accomplished. Usually it's driven by money, and if there's no money, there's no projects. We do utilize the state grants, the LOSEF grants, the town aid road grants, which we get on typically an annual basis for the road program that, again, Kurt and Fran administer. The new grant, that municipal aid grant for projects is scheduled later on. We've used that for some deficiencies that we haven't been able to do over the years. If we had our druthers, we'd have an equipment reserve program where we put money aside for Public Works trucks, for fire work, for fire department vehicles, so that when the time can, you needed a half-million-dollar truck, you had the money there. If you turn back the clock to the 90s, what we did, we put money aside every year into a pot, so we paid cash for fire trucks, paid cash for Public Works vehicles. And as the town fell on tough times in, you know, the 98 and the 2000 period, that practice kind of stopped. But we should try to strive to get back to that, to develop those reserves, so that when the time comes, we do need, because we do need apparatus every so often, whether it's fire apparatus or Public Works vehicles. Instead of bonding them or leasing them, if we had the cash in hand, we should get back to that, that focus. We also, we used to have a road reserve, a road program, paving reserve, and that whole kind of philosophy has kind of gone out the window. But it's nice to accumulate those money, so when the time comes, you have to pave a road. Again, you're not bonding it or relying on the state aid, that's diminishing over time. You have the cash on hand to do it. So it's a focus. Many towns, you talk about capital improvements, they have an internal policy that say, they have the value of one mil that they set aside for capital programs. Our case be about a million, too. We are significantly lower than that. I know Kurt, every year, is looking for money for road programs. We keep putting roads out to the point where we're rebuilding them instead of doing maintenance on them. So if we had an internal policy, again, as some towns do, that say, okay, whatever the value of one mil is, that's your capital program. Will it increase taxes? Certainly, but in the long run, it will save us by being able to capture, capture roads before they get to the point of having to rebuild them, or unsafe apparatus that Fran's got his guys running in that no floorboards anymore. It's, you know, we got to be a little proactive instead of reactive.
So just to, just to clarify that, though, it's not like, it's not like the town council changed their mind on this. In those years when we were doing that?
We had money.
Our grant list went up every year, so.
Oh, yeah.
We could fund the Board of Ed's increase and, and put money aside and not raise taxes.
Oh, yeah, like I said, when times were better, we had, we had the ability to put those little nest eggs aside and pay things we catch.
Right, so.
Has the economy tanked on it?
I think we all want to do it, it's just, how much do we want to raise taxes to do it?
Correct.
Do we put anything aside now?
Negative. Paying as you go, basically.
Try to fool.
But we would be better to put money aside now than to bond for things like.
Oh, certainly.
Snowplow truck and stuff, so.
Certainly. It's a practice again, what we're putting in there is only the amount that we need to fund the current year leases.
Right.
And again, in this case, Fran's gotten some new vehicles through another state grant, but there's no money, there's no accumulation of, of a pot, so that when his next snowfighter goes down and it's whatever the number is, quarter million dollars, we have that money sitting there. We're going to have to lease it or, or bond, whatever we have to do at that point, so it's kind of, it's bad financial practice. It's like you're doing for your house. You, you need a new roof, you don't go out and try to, you know, borrow, if you save over your little, every year, and then if it's done, you, you need it, and you do it, and it's all kind of washing out. Something to strive for.
I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved, that the North Branford Town Council adopts the 2017, 18 through 2022, 23 Capital Improvement Plan pursuant to the favorable review of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglio.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next, we'll move into new business, review and approval of RFP for North Branford Police Department Phone System.
Yes, we're working, as you know, and on the system for the police department, and the bid specs are, are in front of you with a revised. Just point out what those revisions were. They were on, just minor typos on page nine. It would, it said paragraph two, or, yeah, paragraph two on page nine had said city, so it's changed to town, and then we, and actually in paragraph one, wrote in the name of the bid for this. So that was just two, two minor changes with the bid. I think it's ready to go, and Lieutenant Lovelace is here, if you have any questions, but we can, I think, ready to get this out on the street unless there was something else that the council picked up on or would like changes.
Starts on 133. I know.
It's a little good for everybody. Somebody want to make a motion to approve it?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the RFP for the phone system upgrade for the North Branford Police Department.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglio.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is review and approval of RFP for generator company number one firehouse.
Yes, you also have a revised as well. There were two, just two minor on pages one and two. It was just the, the installation may require both building and zoning permits, so it was just adding, adding building in there to that. And page two had a, had a minimum of 20 years. And page two had a, had a minimum of twenty years. I changed that as suggesting five. Of course, the council may want ten. I thought just twenty was too hard, too high and might restrict the amount of responses we get. But Bill, Chief Seward is here as well and I'm sure he may have a very good argument for that. But it was my recommendation. I didn't want to limit us and so five years is my recommendation. That's all, that's all. Everything else is very in-depth and technical. Obviously, you, you have close to twenty pages.
Counselor, just as a point of information, we, we're following the same format that we followed in November of two thousand fifteen for the installation of a diesel-powered generator. It's a Cummings seventy KW that was installed at Company Three. We have gone through the same process. The primary difference with this installation is that at Company One, there's natural gas available. So that'll allow us to change over to natural gas and have uninterrupted emergency standby generation power. The generator that's presently at Company One, if we look back at the records, saying we found some, although inconsistent, the generator was likely installed somewhere in the late sixties or early seventies and it only powers fifty percent of the station. We have had to use the portable generator that Public Works has, especially during Hurricane Sandy and Irene, to power up that station with an exterior outlet. Again, for commonality features, it's the same manufactured generator that we have at Station Three, so it's a Cummings. And I would strongly recommend that we don't look at a vendor that only has five years of experience in this industry.
How many years?
If my memory serves me correct, we had a minimum of two, possibly three bidders the last time, and those bid specs said twenty years.
You can make it anything, Anthony. You can make it ten if you want.
This, the.
If they had twenty, time manager reduced to five, if you want to split it, you can have ten.
Why would we split it? Well, I mean, why would we change it? Did we put it out for people to bid on?
No, we have to approve it.
Right, so how do you know you won't, you won't get any bidders if you don't figure it out?
We, we announced the bid in two thousand fifteen and we had two or three responses with companies that made it.
Yeah, that's, well, no, but that's, that's what I mean. We're, we're just making an assumption that at twenty years, we won't, we might not get many hits on it, but we, we don't know that. Can't, I mean, if we got no hits on it, wouldn't we be able to adjust it?
Yeah, you, you would have to put it back up to bid again with the adjustment.
But if you get somebody with ten years, I mean, they've been in the business for ten years in generators, I mean, you're gonna get, you're gonna get a reliable source.
And, and that's a big concern that we have and that we have a reliable vendor that bids and completely installs and, and delivers a product, that's gonna be good for us.
So what happens to the generator that's there?
At some point, it'll be removed. It's, honestly, Counselor, it's an old motor engine that is being used as a generator.
That's how they were made back then.
It, it's, yeah. It's in a, it's in a block building that's built off the back of the station. And again, as you know, the stations belong to the company and the best that I know, they don't intend to demolish that small annex structure that probably measures eight by ten. And again, if, if you look at the, the context of the RFP, it is very comprehensive and it does mandate a, a vendor visit to the station and mandatory walkthrough.
So the generator is gonna go in the same spot?
Uh, no, it'll be remote. It's, it's a much bigger generator because it will power the entire station.
Oh.
And, and that's why the caveat was put in that any permits that were necessary would be the responsibility of the vendor.
Okay. But the, the generator is going to be town prop, because the town's purchasing this, correct?
Exactly.
So the old generator would become town property, would go to auction or scrap or whatever at, when you get the new one in.
Whatever the town decides.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
I got a question on page fifteen, number four. And I know somewhere they cross each other, but I didn't think it was forty degrees, but I may be wrong. So it says that the ambient temperatures are from minus forty degrees Celsius to plus sixty degrees Celsius. And then it says minus forty to a hundred and forty Fahrenheit is, so who in the room knows those? Is forty degrees the one that they match up on?
Zero, zero degrees Celsius equals thirty-two degrees Fahrenheit. One hundred degrees Celsius equals two twelve Fahrenheit.
So is minus forty and forty, is minus forty and minus forty the same?
Not in Celsius and Fahrenheit, no.
No, not Celsius Fahrenheit.
So we got a typo here, then?
Right, because one, one is in Celsius and one is in Fahrenheit, so it's two different temperatures, so that's just.
We'll make that change.
So what should it be, Celsius or Fahrenheit?
Uh, we keep it in.
Go with Fahrenheit, it's minus forty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you could go with, you know, whatever, but that one's correct. The Celsius one is wrong. So with that correction, we should be able to approve it.
So are we happy with the five years or are we?
Oh, right, right, right.
You want to move that to ten years, Al, since you're making the correction?
I would be comfortable with ten years. I think five years, you could, you could bluff your way through, so. But I think at ten years, if you're still in business and have been putting them in for ten years.
You're gonna be around for another ten years.
But if you got three bids at, I mean, how many people would normally bid it? It could be the same company.
Just a straight-out generator install company?
It's pretty easy.
After twenty years, we'd be doing it. So we need a number.
Is the chief okay with ten years or you want to go to twelve or? Don't let me talk you into it. Let's change it to ten, then.
Yep.
Change to temperature.
You have that mic?
Yeah, that's, no, I, I was just raising the issue. I, I didn't want it to be, to preclude any others and, and narrow our, our chances of getting someone. Or look as though we're, you know, gearing it toward, if we only had one, one company that responded, then it looked like we were writing it toward, toward, tailoring it toward that company.
Right.
I think you're fine with ten. I'm okay.
Al, you want to make that motion?
Well, on, on, just on page twelve, there's a reference to the minus, it's the same thing, the Celsius and the Fahrenheit.
I think it is the same. Negative forty.
Negative forty and negative forty. That's what I was cautious about.
Sixty. To the right.
No matter what, minus forty is cold. If it'll start at minus forty, we're in good shape.
Al, you gonna make that motion?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
So we're gonna leave all those temperatures alone. So the only thing we're changing is, so I make a motion to, to approve this. With the change, where was that?
Page two.
With the change of.
Page two, from twenty to ten.
Right. Right, so we'll change that in the second paragraph to a minimum of ten years.
Is there a second?
Uh, second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mary Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Viglione?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next is review and approve bid response for Brushwood Grinding.
Yeah, I put a memo together for you with a suggested motion to approve Running Brook Farms LLC. The, the little hiccup that we have there is that our allocation's only twenty thousand, but it, and the bid is, the lowest bid was, was, was twenty-seven. And talking with Fran, it seemed an important project to get done and that he would get it done within the, within the allocation that he had already previously approved. So they would do what, as much as they can up to the bid award.
I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby approves the bid results for bid number nine, Brushwood Grinding, and awards the work to Running Brook Farms LLC of Killingworth, Connecticut, for a total not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mary Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Viglione?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next item is financial report as of November thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Fortunately, the financial report remains unremarkable. Again, the areas I typically look for, the property tax collection on the current basis. Slightly ahead of last year, total revenue remains ahead of last year, expenditures are made behind last year.
What is the?
One day it's gonna stop, I don't know.
What's the miscellaneous revenue that's so high that we got in?
Uh, refund of prior year expenditures. I can get the detail for you. I don't have it on me right here, but I can dig it up for you. Typically, if it's, if a money, an expense that was incurred in the prior year, if we get a credit on a bill or a check comes back, it goes into an account called refunds of prior year expenditures. I can, I can make a detail for you, though. I'll send it up to Mike.
All right, because it's like three times the amount that's in the budget, so that's why.
That one line is ninety thousand, eight twenty-two against a ten-thousand-dollar budget. So that's. Again, at this point, no account remain, no accounts are expended, except on revenue, which is a good thing. And it's all good. Any questions?
Thank you. Next is computer backup alternatives.
For the new counselors, one of my hats that I wear is I'm also the town IT person. And one of the items that we've kind of kicked around for several years is a good computer backup, continuation of operations plan. If for whatever reason, this building was no longer inhabitable, catastrophe, whatever happened to be the case here. So the, the amount of disaster could be anything as simple as our file server crashes, which is housed in the middle school currently. That would be one level of, of being down versus the town hall being down versus a hurricane that we've seen in this past season. The hurricanes the size of the state of Florida that devastate a large amount of area and make the town basically impassable as we found out during the last few storms. So we looked at a couple of different scenarios, how we could provide a reasonable backup. And one that we looked at has a company in Branford that has a location, a data center by the truck stop. And the issue with that, while it's an advantage being able to go work there, if this building was uninhabitable, the proximity between our two locations makes it not really attractive for disaster management. But if a wide scale, wide scale hurricane came through, it would devastate Branford as well as North Branford most likely and cause destruction on, on both of those. They have a sister location in Middletown, but again, if you look at the size it has stormed recently, that's not really that far away. We then looked at one that has basically a cloud-based backup that would take our files to the cloud with a data center actually in Utah. And I put some information in your packet. If you look back in two thousand three, it was when the whole northeast was dark. Our grid that came out of Canada, the whole New York and New England states were dark in two thousand three. So by us being in a separate power grid across the country, it eliminates that from one of our risk factors. Obviously, you can, you can scenario this eight ways to Tuesday, what, what can happen? Is it the building? Is it the town? Did the middle school go away? What's, what's out of the loop that causes us to have a problem? And the nice feature about the, the online cloud backup is that within thirty minutes of us notifying them, they would have our files up and running, our, our server, they'd take a virtual server for us up, up in the cloud that we would point URL IP addresses to and be able to function. Now, when I wrote this memo, there was concern about the AS four hundred, how we would satisfy that for our, our financial records. And in talking to our vendor, she actually has a solution that we actually will avail ourselves to, that it's a cloud-based backup of that information as well. So they'll provide us with an IP address we will give to Omni Data. They'll plug that into their matrix so that if we ever go down, they would point our, all our users to this IP address where our data would be. It would be seamless. As we talked about backup, I also talked with Lieutenant Lovelace at the police department, as far as what he does for backup. And backup is one of those things that everybody likes to talk about, but no one really does anything about because it's, it's expensive and it's like the back burner kind of thing. And we're looking at maybe including the police department as well on a similar type situation. The concern that he has with the police department is the sensitivity of the information that they, they deal with. And will this sort of backup meet their security and confidentiality criteria that they have to meet? We're re-reviewing that still. Another alternative that he had was to put a, a mirror server in the other police department. Well, again, if you look at whether it's Branford or East Haven, another town that uses next gen, a wide-scale disaster would encompass all that area. So maybe that's not the best idea. I also talked with Bruce Williams over at the school and, again, they have obviously a large stake in, in our, in our world. They, our servers are housed at the middle school, as I mentioned. But backup is something that they also are looking at as well. So we're gonna start out small, looking at just the town hall assets and being able to virtualize our servers and to have this cloud-based backup that we can, again, go online in this matter of thirty minutes when something bad happens. The other alternative, the other thing I mentioned, forgot to mention, was if you turn back the clock in the last six months, there was a plethora of computer viruses that wannabe, I wanna cry, whatever it was, virus, where anybody opened up a bad file, your entire network was shot. And we have a lot of folks on our network that have the ability, those, those emails, we've all got them at our house and our regular emails, look very realistic. It's your bank, it's people that UPS, it's things that you know and love. You hit that email, suddenly the virus has now attacked your entire network. If that were to happen, this would come into play as well. We would basically abandon that data and they would spend a new data, a new server up for us, again, within thirty minutes. So it's not only for disaster as far as if something physically happened to this building. It's if our data gets compromised, instead of having to pay ransomware, we would use, utilize this methodology. Ideally, you know, what would happen if something, another bad situation happened and this building was unavailable? We'd probably go to Northford, to the ambulance building, it's a town-owned building, that would become the pseudo-town hall. We have internet access there, it's on a generator, a separate power company. That would be where we function probably if this building were to evaporate tomorrow, let's say, whatever happened to be the case. So, again, being able to get our files within a half hour after something bad did happen really is, is very important to us. And, again, it's that continuation of operations that we kind of have kicked around at staff level for probably five to seven years and never really done anything because it's, we'll get to it, kind of, we'll get to it. Well, these storms in the last six months, these hurricanes really have, you know, opened our eyes and say, this is a really legitimate concern we need to act on. So as far as the budget is concerned, there is money in the technology department. It's slightly higher, we're paying now. We have an online, a cloud-based backup for our data only. This is what they call a bare metal backup, is the entire, tiger server would be backed up. So it's about a four-thousand-dollar delta year-over-year cost. But, again, we're going in halfway, basically, so it'd be about a two-thousand-dollar delta this current year and we would factor that into the eighteen, nineteen budget going forward.
So is this backup for all town departments except the police station?
Uh, no, this is for the town hall and the recreation department servers. No one else really has servers per se. Recreation has three servers, they have an administrative server, they have their rec-track server and they have a server that does their, their, not PayPal, their web track transactions for their, their courses. So those three would be virtualized on, into this situation. Ours would be virtualized into this situation. It does not include the police or the school system yet, but we're looking to expand to get into that mentality.
Okay.
So what does the Police Department do? The reason why I ask that, if we were in a catastrophe...
Right.
We would need the Police Department.
Correct. Well, the Police Department, they're on a generator as far as the ability to operate. As far as the data goes, I don't... Jimmy'll tell you.
So through our vendor now, NextGen, we already do a virtual backup already. So anybody that's a NextGen provider, we could be up and running anywhere in the state. The reason for the backup server was just another location to store our data and something that they can manage, so we had a twofold response if something happened. So that's... So if the cost is down and we can get rid of that service through NextGen, then that's something we can look at. One of the concerns they had was that they had to look into it further to see if it was CGIS-approved for the data, the FBI material and stuff like that. They have certain qualifications that you have to meet to store that data. So as we get more information, then we'll look at that and compare the numbers and see if that's an option for us.
Okay, thanks.
I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved, that the North Branford Town Council directs the Town Manager and Treasurer, Finance Director to sign the necessary paperwork to enter into a cloud-based backup disaster recovery solution through OmniData at an annual cost of $5,184 per quote number Q2YQ7632.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duddy?
Yes.
Deputy Mary Angeloni?
Yes.
Councillor Candelora?
Yes.
Councillor Diamond?
Yes.
Councillor Rose?
Yes.
Councillor Viglian?
Yes.
Councillor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next is analysis of municipal project grants.
This, I believe, Councillor Candelora requested last meeting. On the second page is a little spreadsheet that shows the history on those grants going back to 2013, 14, when that grant started. You notice on that top line, the facility study, $100,000, remains unspent to the far right. We also left $163,000 unaccounted for that year. We had identified a couple of projects, if you recall, I have that page attached. We looked at the tennis courts at Northford Park, basketball courts, and we left that $120,000 kicking around just in case that that money, that was a steep grant, did not come through. 14, 15, we accounted for 99% of it, same in 15, 16. 16, 17, we did leave about $83,000 unidentified. This year, actually, we dug into that reserve by $29,000 roughly. Bottom of that column is about $218,000 that is unallocated, that I was gonna put forward into the 18, 19 capital plan to see where that plays out as far as some new projects as the departments come forward with their requests. We'll see how, what items we're looking for, and we can spend some of that money towards that. Again, in the current, the 17, 18, that very bottom, when you see the Public Works vehicles, $195,000, those are the three trucks that Mr. Moro identified, generator for Company One, this is actually just approved, about $60,000, and the PDEOC generator, about $75,000. And we've got some good news that we are proceeding along that path with that grant. There's a grant, roughly about $14,000, we'd be able to apply for. It looks like we're gonna be eligible for it to offset that $75,000 PDEOC generator. Any question on those grants for municipal projects? Against a new program that started in 13, 14. No action needed, just for informational purposes.
Thank you. Moving to the 401A and 457 fiduciary.
As the town moves the pension plans into defined contribution world, obviously, the town plan moved in in 1999, and the police plan moved in this last July. One of the concerns that many folks have is the, will our retirees have significant income at the end of their career to retire? You know, as we transfer to the 401A environment, the risk of the investments is all put on the employee to direct their own investments. And the town has a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that our employees are educated. If you look at the folks, the professionals that either we use or are in the world today, they make mistakes on their investments. So how do we expect laypeople, if you will, to make wise investments at the end of their career, they have a significant, you know, retirement to survive off of? So Town Manager and I are going through... We did like a little formal, informal quote. We got three prices backed from different firms, and we are interviewing the two most reasonably priced firms, and we hope to narrow that down and make a decision tomorrow, and we will send the contract to Attorney Moreno, so that'll be on your next agenda for us to proceed with that. Again, it's the way it's structured, they identify cost savings for us in, let's say, ICMA, that's, we use that for our 457 plan. And let's say they can save us 30 basis points off the fee structure. We can direct, say, 10 basis points of that to pay for this service, so it's not costing the town any money. The employees will still see a savings of, like, say, a 20 basis point savings on their fee structure, but they have now the professional management, they have this other watchdog who is monitoring the plans, making sure the lineup of the investments is suitable for our employees, maybe bringing new investments into the mix that people want to invest in instead of being locked into what ICMA has in their current listing of investments. They'll be able to suggest new investments for our employees. So it'll be truly a betterment for the employees, at no cost to the town, and it relieves some of our fiduciary risk and responsibility. Because towns have gotten... People have gotten sued as employers because they haven't given their employees enough education to make wise decisions for their pensions. In the old-school defined benefit plan, basically, as long as you work there, there's a multiplier, it's pretty straightforward, the investment risk is on the town. Well, in the defined contribution world, the investment risk is on the employee. And make sure that we... We have to make sure that we are educating them properly so that they're making wise decisions for their families by the end of their career. So we'll come back next meeting with a... After we identify the one, we believe we know the one we're gonna go with, we'll get his contract, and we'll have it sent to the town attorney for his review, and we'll have it on our next agenda.
Thank you. Next is approval of tax refunds.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duddy?
Yes.
Deputy Mary Angeloni?
Yes.
Councillor Candelora?
I'm staying.
Councillor Diamond?
Yes.
Councillor Rose?
Yes.
Councillor Viglian?
Yes.
Councillor Zampiano?
Yes.
I have just one question before we move on to new business. At the last council meeting, I had asked about information on a code of conduct, and I don't see anything on this agenda, just wanted to know what the status was.
I engaged CCM to try and research, didn't have much. They had some other... It wasn't... It weren't code of conduct, so I'd asked then to Councillor Moreno to take over from his sources to see if he could find that.
Okay.
And just by way of update, the code of conduct, as you were generally referring to, is generally encapsulated within the Code of Ethics, as opposed to being a standalone code of conduct ordinance. So that's the way it tends to be dealt with, within the ethical, the Code of Ethics. So you don't need a separate ordinance, which could be in conflict with your Code of Ethics. You could seek to revise your Code of Ethics, though, if you felt that they were inadequate.
Next item, citizen statements and petitions. Seeing none, motion adjourned?
So moved.